Okay, we are going to go ahead and get started, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Good morning and welcome to the public hearing for the OLCC batch tagging date and rule alignment. My name is Nicole Blassay and I am the Rules Coordinator for the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission. Today is March 15th at approximately 10:06 a.m. and this public hearing is being held virtually. The purpose of a public hearing is to give interested persons a reasonable opportunity to submit data and/or personal comments prior to the adoption of permanent rulemaking. This morning's hearing is being held in accordance with Chapter 183 of the Oregon Revised Statutes, otherwise known as the Administrative Procedures Act, Division 1 of Chapter 845 of the Commission's Administrative Rules, and Division 1 of Chapter 137 of the Oregon Administrative Rules, otherwise known as the Model Rules of Administrative Procedure. Please be advised that today's hearing is being recorded. During this morning's hearing, we will accept comments from anyone who wishes to submit them. If you are interested in providing testimony but have not yet signed up, you can email us at olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov, or you may raise your hand in Teams or message us in Teams and we will be happy to take your testimony. If you wish to submit written comment after today's hearing, you may do so provided that all submissions are received by 12:00 p.m. on March 31st, 2024. And I will put that information in the chat here as well. You may submit written comment by emailing olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. In accordance with OAR 1370010040, all public comments received on this matter, whether in the form of written document or oral testimony, will become a part of the permanent rulemaking record. Here is a summary of the proposed rules for today. The Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission adopted permanent rules at its March 2023 meeting relating to batch tagging of marijuana plants with an effective date of January 1st, 2024. However, the OLCC has encountered procurement delays which have impeded the implementation of batched plant tagging within the cannabis tracking system. Due to these delays, the system will not be ready for batch tagging by the effective date of January 1st, 2024. ORS 475C.177 mandates that the OLCC develop and maintain a system for ensuring an accurate accounting of the production of marijuana items and the propagation of immature marijuana plants and the production of marijuana by excuse me, by a marijuana producer. Staff is delaying the implementation of batch tagging until April to ensure system functionality aligns with the rules. Further, over the course of the past year, the OLCC has worked to implement legislation, policy changes, and technical adjustments to the cannabis rules within Division 25 of Chapter 845 of the Oregon Administrative Rules. Staff carry these rule changes through the full rulemaking process. However, these various changes require technical alignment within the Secretary of State Rules database to ensure all of the changes are aligned. At this time, I do not have anyone formally signed up to give testimony. Is there anybody on the call that would like to provide testimony today? Okay, we will keep the hearing open for approximately another 15, 20 minutes. Oh, it looks like we have Sarah from Green Bandit would like to provide testimony.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
I sure can. Sarah, can you please state your name and organization for the record?
Yes, my name is Sarah Niestraff. Our farm name is Green Bandit. And yeah, is that all you needed for that info?
Yes, sure, sure. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, yeah. So this, this is problematic for farms and it's, it's not quite making sense to me and many others that that the software has not been, that it hasn't been able to be updated within a year since the rule was, you know, changed. There has there have been several rule changes, you know, over the years that required METRIC to modify the CTS software? And has there ever been a reason for the software updates to take longer than a year to implement? Like, for example, we have immature plant batching under package tags. Why would it be so difficult to apply that to the mature plant batching under plant tags? And I realize that's more of a question to be directed to, you know, METRIC and Franwell. But I'm just wondering why there hasn't been more pressure on METRIC to get these done in time for us to implement on time this year, especially for the outdoor crops, the outdoor producers that would be planting around June 1st, at least down in the southern Oregon region. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Sarah. Is there anybody?
And I'm so sorry, so sorry. The link, the, the meeting link is still not working on the website. Jesse from CIAO was able to send me the link that worked, but the one on the website still isn't, at least for me, it wasn't. So there might, there might be even more people on this call if it was working. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Again, our, our website has been reloaded with the correct links. So you would need to reload the website. I do apologize. It looks like we have about 30 people on the call, so it's working for some. But I do apologize again, we've reloaded that link. You just would need to reload the website. And we'll just keep trying to circulate the link. I do apologize again. Is there anybody on the call that would like to provide testimony today? All right, I have a guest, S3LLC. S3LLC.
Hello, Ms. Blassay. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you please provide your name and organization?
My name is Jason Lampman. I'm with State 3 Farms.
Your name isn't showing up on the link, just your username. Go ahead, Jason. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a little trouble logging in as well. So I, this is, I'd like to repeat the, the previous speaker's concerns. This is unfortunate, especially for greenhouse and outdoor growers. And most of us being small businesses, you know, we've been looking for this for a long time and it's, and it's a significant amount of savings, especially for us micro tiers as well that are running greenhouses. I, I would like to, you know, commend the OLCCs for pushing forward a trend of like implementing rules and support for the success of small businesses. But, and I'm wondering if possibly a solution to this would be the OLCC putting in a temporary or an emergency rule that would, because it, since it's so close to outdoor season that possibly we could do a temporary change to the rule of 36 inches to 60 inches of a plant, or maybe five feet or six feet or something, as because it's already in the rule that plants must stay in vegetative state and not be flowering under definition. So I understand just from your opening statement that this is a problem with, I guess, with the company, so not the OLCC. But I just thought I'd offer that as a possible suggestion. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jason. The next person I have signed up is John Herta.
Hello. Good morning.
Hi, John. We can hear you. If you could just introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, I just, it was showing that my microphone was still off. Yeah, good morning. My name's John Herta. I'm from River Grown LLC and I'm a producer in southern Oregon since 2017. Basically, I wanted to, again, confirm what everyone else is saying. This is something that's been talked about for a while now and we've been looking forward to it for a while now. One, not just the cost of the tags themselves and the ways that they produce, but additionally, the, the labor needed to, you know, tag all the plants. Last year, I ran around 3,500 plants and that's kind of a smaller, on a smaller scale. If you're like an indoor guy, like that could be in the tens of thousands of tags per year. And so over the last, you know, six, seven years, you know, I've, I've produced tens of thousands of tag waste. But again, you know, we'll tag these plants and then they outgrow that, you know, that zip tie essentially. And now you're going back and removing it, placing it on another part of the plant, and you could see how it could quickly add up to a lot of labor. So really, that's been my, my biggest concern and I've had inspectors down here, you know, it's not, they gotta crawl down and get, you know, to be able to find these things. And yeah, if there was some kind of emergency, you know, I like what the previous caller said, changing the height type or something like that, it'd be, it'd be huge for these smaller farmers and which, you know, a lot of us are struggling. So thank you for your time and that's it. I, thank you.
Great. Thank you, John. We do have a few more folks signed up. I just wanted to make a quick correction before we continue. I had mentioned when I was reading the batch tagging information that the staff is delaying the implementation of until April. The correct month is June, so I do apologize. So staff is delaying the implementation of batch tagging until June of this year to ensure system functionality. So I'm making that quick correction. The next person I have signed up is Cheryl Bishop. Cheryl?
Hi, this is Cheryl Johnson, Bishop Orchard. This is very, I just want to say thank you to OLCC for continuing to, you know, we're trying to move forward and sometimes we get stuck in this very frustrating time. I want to thank the fact that we're not having a raise in tags, price tags. It's still 45 cents. It was 100 tags. It's $45. We didn't have to go up. This is really, we're talking about how the economics of this is and it's just, it's much more than what we're glossing over here a little bit. Yes, the payroll expense for tagging individual tags, having to keep them up, having to do the data, having to do all the things that happens from seed to sale is very expensive and very labor intensive. And it seems to me unfair that the outdoor grower, it can keep that, or the indoor grower can keep this date and will have two to three more burns to go and they're going to have a lower cost in operating costs. They're going to have lower labor costs and that's kind of an unfair trade advantage when it continues that the outdoor grower gets the lowest price in the state and we work just as hard and our licenses are just as much money. So my frustration is there. However, I really do appreciate you. This has been my biggest frustration for the two years since it was talked about the very first time at the meeting in Ashland. Way back, if we remember, we were talked about this and then it has taken all of this time to get it implemented. METRIC knew that it was going to come. I don't understand why that has taken so long, but this is where we're at. And I would also like to ask if we could please have an emergency rule that gives us a variance on our plants or, you know, we are plotting our, I have written about this several times, we, we plot our, a map of our plants in January. We're over, I've already got clones going. We needed that January 1st to, to work for us. We needed that, that, we need April. We need a May so that the outdoor season, if you don't make a special rule for us, then those small tie, the smaller guys and even us will have to go a whole nother season underneath the, the tag system we have now. We will not benefit. So our costs are going to be higher coming to the market and it is very much a hindrance to the outdoor grower. So I, again, I applaud you for the things that we're doing well. I just think that we have to do something for the outdoor growers who in southern Oregon, that's where the majority of these growers are. And it seems just unfair to be held. Our, our plants are not going to be 36 inches when they go into the ground. So that's where we're at. And again, thank you, everybody. And I'm sorry, I'm grumpy about this, but this is the biggest cost savings. After all these years in the industry, after following all the rules, now these rules are starting to get streamlined that will actually help the farmers' bottom line in operating costs. It seems just one more time that we're going to go another season and nobody keeps in consideration that regardless of when these rule dates are, the plants are growing. So everybody have a good day and sorry, I'm so grumpy.
All right. Is that the conclusion of your testimony today?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Next up, I have Sarah from Green Bandit. And following Sarah will be her husband, Brian, but they wanted to testify separately. So Sarah and Brian, if you can introduce yourselves and take it away.
Hi, this is Brian Niestraff. It's actually just me who's speaking. Sarah has already put her two cents in. And yeah, this is Brian Niestraff, owner of Green Bandit. I'm just, I want to say that I really appreciate what Cheryl just said. And, and I, she touched on a point that I wanted to make, which is that for this delay to be pushed back to June 17th is really not a three to four month delay. This is a whole year for us, sun grown farmers, because we will be well within the ground by June 17th. And so each of us, sun grown farms, will have had to have purchased maybe 1,000 or 2,000 tags unnecessarily. And last year, when we put our plants in the ground, we were all excited for the fact that this would be the last time we would have to tag all 1,000 plants that go into our field. So for the fact that they are going to miss it by this date and hit June 17th, just strikes me as more of a money grab than anything else because June 1st is a pretty target, a good target date for most sun grown farms. And by June 17th, the overwhelming majority of sun grown will be in the ground. So I see that, it, it just looks like a money grab to me. One last shot at many millions of dollars statewide. I don't think that that's fair. And it seems to me that a year is plenty of time to work out the software kinks and those things. So I just don't feel very much patience based upon the way that this has rolled out and the fact that we would have this, this rule set in place and we will have to wait now two years before we actually get to see the, the impact of that, the positive impact is, that's just wrong. So I hope that the OLCC will take the advice of a few others and look at emergency, emergency rulemaking as a means of, of us getting through this without having to spend so much money unnecessarily because there are lots of farms out here. So if I'm spending $1,000 that I shouldn't be and we multiply that by all of the farms, it's just a lot of money and it does look like a money grab. So I yield. And the plastic waste, that's all, yeah, I'm not going to yield just yet. My farm has been dedicated to reducing plastic waste since we got started. We don't put any packaging of plastic waste out there onto the state. We take that expense. It's been hard to do. We're a small business and like many of us, we're all struggling to, to make it. And we have taken on plastic waste as a major issue within our business and I would really like to see it, that it's as important to the state as it is to us individuals. The thousand extra tags being wasted multiplied by 1,000 farms is just really an environmental disaster that's unnecessary. I yield.
All right. Thank you, Brian. The next person I have on the list to provide testimony is Mary Ann. I don't see a last name.
Hi, thank you. This is Mary Ann Kersagia with Alibi Cannabis. We're an indoor producer and thank you for providing this forum for us to share our thoughts. The way that this was originally envisioned was a time and efficiency savings for us to have batches of, you know, up to 100 plants. The way that it's being rolled out is that we'll instead have, have to purchase tags with different quantities pre-assigned. So if I have a room filled with, let's just say, 128 plants, I will have to use one tag that's 100, another tag that's the 25, and then three to get me to 128. So the logistical nightmares and the room for errors when you're talking about my cultivation text going through and applying tags, it's, it's just astronomical. It's, this is not going to be a time savings at all. In fact, it's going to be way more difficult because I'll have to project specifically which group of tags I'm going to need to buy. How many 20 tags do I need? How many 50 tags do I want? Keep track of that and assign them correctly. So METRIC already has functionality built in that's used for the clone batches and immature batches. So it would seem to me that we should be able to just use that functionality and apply that to mature plants. So it shouldn't be a really big thing. And as long as we can use our existing tags, then it shouldn't, it shouldn't be as big a deal as it feels like it's getting to be. So I appreciate your listening and hearing what these inefficiencies that are now being created by the, by these rules, what they're going to do to our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anybody on the call that would like to provide testimony today? You can raise your hand in Teams or interject. I have a hand up from Zachary Clink Skills.
Hi, yeah, I'm Zachary Clink Skills and I'm with TLO Farms LLC. And I just want to state that this rule has been made quite a while ago and we're still at a point that we don't have this ability. And we had already been approved rule wise that this is something that is coming out and now we're waiting on a METRIC functionality phase. That seems a little silly to me. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Zachary. Is there anybody who would like to provide testimony that I have not, that we have not heard from? Okay, we'll keep the, we'll keep the meeting open for, I don't know, five, 10 more minutes and see if anybody wants to join or provide testimony today. And then if I don't hear from anybody, we will conclude the meeting after that. So we'll just hold for a few more minutes and see if we have any, anybody else join us. Thank you, everyone. It looks like we have a raised hand from Jesse Bonnacu.
Thank you very much. My name is Jesse Bonnacu. I'm the Executive Director of the Cannabis Industry Alliance of Oregon. Many of the people who have spoken so far today are communicating feelings, beliefs, and ideas that I have heard from many others. And so I think it is fair to take, to understand that their comments so far are much more broadly represented than a number of people have testified. With saying that, again, I'm Jesse Bonnacu. I'm the Executive Director of the CIAO. We represent over 500 individual licenses across the state, including many, many farms. And, you know, batch tagging in general is one of, is an issue that is incredibly important to the industry. It is, many, many folks have been working for years to make progress on a, creating a rational and reasonable CTS system. And batch tagging is one of the pieces of that vision. The industry started planning for this opportunity last spring, believing that January 1 was going to be the elimination period. Obviously, that date has gotten moved several times to the great disappointment of many. This obviously has prevented any producer licenses who have had plants mature since then and will have them mature before the 7th, you know, before mid-June, any potential labor savings batch tagging may provide. Furthermore, all businesses crave clarity and predictability and the changing dates obviously undermine that, making it very difficult for farms to make smart business decisions, learn how to adapt to this opportunity and generally figure out how to maximize the benefit from batch, from batch tagging. Sadly for many outdoor farms, I think, as you've heard, a mid-June implementation very well may mean that they are not able to take advantage of this opportunity at all in 2024. My request is very simple. Please do everything possible to implement batch tagging as soon as possible. Every day before June 17th is a benefit to people. The sooner it can be to the April deadline that was, you know, presented last winter or earlier this year would be incredibly valuable and beneficial to everybody. I do want, so that being said, I do want to be clear that we understand that there are some hurdles and transitions in recent years that have affected this current situation, which were outside of the OLCC's direct control. We appreciate the OLCC team doing everything possible to mitigate some of these impacts and challenges in the industry, trying to catch up and, most importantly, keeping the lines of communication open to the industry. But we also ask that as we look forward, we have a deeper, we are able to have a deeper conversation and collaboration with the OLCC on CTS, not only for any future rulemaking about batch tagging, but also in regards to any new CTS contracts or anything else like that. We want to, you know, change course a little bit and really double down on working with the OLCC to improve this effort and the results moving forward. And we appreciate all the time OLCC staff have given us and hope that continues into the future. So with that, thank you very much and again, please have this start as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you, Jesse. Looks like I have a hand up from Sarah.
Hey, everybody. It's Brian with Green Bandit again. I just also wanted to touch on something that I've been thinking about, which is going back to a time when we originally had to enter in every single plant tag and its harvest weights upon harvest. And that was a really challenging thing for farms. And over time, we were able to express that to the OLCC and see that that rule was changed so that we could harvest in, in harvest batches rather than plant by plant. And to me, that's, that was implemented pretty quickly. From the time that the rule changed to the time that we were allowed to harvest in that way, it wasn't delayed and delayed. It was something that went straight through. So I just find this bothersome that in this case, there's money at stake and so it continues to get delayed. Whereas when we were harvesting in, in lots rather than plant by plant, it didn't impact anything financially for Franwell and the METRIC system because they had already sold us those tags. We were just not having to record every single tag number. So again, I keep going back to the idea that this seems to be a money thing. And it just may, if, if I was in charge, I think it would make sense to me too that I would want to make another several million dollars before this ends. But I, I'm just bothered by that, that this has taken so long and there's money at stake here. And I just find that to be bothersome and I just wanted to express that. I yield.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else on the call that would like to provide testimony today? Just a reminder, this hearing is an opportunity to provide testimony, not so much private conversation and comments, although we do welcome them and appreciate them. But is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony for the hearing today? But is there anybody else who would like to provide testimony for the hearing today? All right, we will give it another minute or two, just to see if we have anybody else joining us today. We will continue to accept written comments for this rule package until 12:00 PM on March 31st. So if you or anybody who was not able to join today has additional comments, we will definitely accept them via email, and they will be entered into the permanent rulemaking package. So we'll wait just a few more minutes, and then we will conclude the hearing if there is no one else that would like to provide testimony. Thanks, everyone. Looks like I have, excuse me, I have a hand up from Christine.
Hi, I'm Christine Miller from Southern Oregon Moonshine. I've had my first license in June of 2016, and I've had several farms come and go. And the numbers, like if we spend about 3 million on tags, and let's say half of those are plant tags, half are package tags. Honestly, if we paid the difference and we all paid another $500 a year to just give Metric the money that they need, it's the labor cost that really get me for having to tag plants at all. I really think that if we got rid of plant tagging entirely, then it would save us so much time, and Metric's already set up to do that. They have the internal system for immature plants. It's all internal. There's no external tagging involved in that. And I just feel like if it's, if it's a money thing, it's not that much per individual license, and it would save so much time, which is money. Labor is the most expensive part about growing cannabis, and as producers, we come out of pocket 100% before anyone else. We, we pay for everything out of pocket first, and then we wait to get paid back from everybody else. And that would share the burden of tags amongst all the licenses, not just producer licenses, that it affects. And anyways, I yield. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Christine. Anybody else on the hearing today that would like to provide testimony?
If you could just wait five, this is Jesse from the CIAO. If it's possible just to wait five more minutes, just to see if Cheryl can share out the, the link to anybody who's reaching out to her, you know.
Yeah, we will wait until, we'll wait until 10:45.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sure, everyone. Thanks for your patience. Again, I apologize about the link. Thank you.